Roll call for this city council meeting of June 5th, 2019 at 9:00 AM. Mr. Winarski, Ms. Allen, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Jones, Ms. Potowski, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Witherspoon, please rise for a moment of silent meditation and pledge allegiance.
Mr. President, I would that we would remember those who are less fortunate than we are in our local community as well as throughout the world that we live in, our global community. Ask that we remember those who have lost loved ones since the last time we were in these chambers. And I ask our God and Creator to give us the wisdom and allow us to hear the proper information so that we can make the best decisions for the citizens of the city of Erie.
I would also like to remember the people who were shot to death in Virginia Beach in the municipal building there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of minutes from the city council meeting of Wednesday, May 15th, 2019, and bills for payment on May 31st and June 7th, 2019. Ms. Allen, Mrs. Arrington.
Rose, was that about bills and payroll?
Approval of bills?
Yes, I want to separate one item. Under the regular sheet where it says number 002-0617, I'd like to separate the Erie Park Authority the payment of $71,832 pending more information from the Erie Park Authority.
Okay.
You have to second.
I'll second that.
Mr. President, so we're voting just to pull it off the agenda for voters?
Yes, that one bill. So we have to vote separately, correct, Mr. Betsa?
Correct.
Yes. Okay. And we informed, I think the controller has been informed, correct?
Okay, who was the payment to, Council?
Erie Park Authority.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Potowski, seconded by Mr. Winarski, to separate out and vote for the payment to the Erie Parking Authority. Is there any discussion on this or are we just gonna, you could just gonna vote?
No, I'm just voting not to pay until we have a discussion with them.
At our finance meeting.
At a finance meeting.
Okay, roll call, Ms. Allen, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Jones, Ms. Potowski, Ms. Schaff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. Okay, now we'll continue with the approval of the bills. Mr. Jones, Ms. Potowski, Ms. Schaff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. That'll take us to repository sales.
Do we have anybody here this morning regarding repository sales?
Good morning, Mr. President and members of council. My name is Jeremy Kobeski and I'm counsel for Fae Servicing LLC, who is the mortgage servicer for Citigroup Mortgage Loan Trust 2014-C. And I'm here regarding parcel number 18-051-033.0-101.00. My client had previously submitted a repository letter of intent.
Sir, what's the address to that property?
The address, it's known Zero McClelland Avenue in Erie and it is adjacent to a property... street address. I think we did get it. It's adjacent to property that has a mortgaged property which contains a house to which my client is the mortgagee and has a pending foreclosure action. Throughout that process, we realized that this adjacent parcel was lost due to a misunderstanding or mistake with the payment of taxes. So my client's intent is to repurchase this property to allow the foreclosure action to proceed. Judgment has already been entered in that action, so once this property is deeded back to the mortgagee, we would be able to execute on that judgment by scheduling a sheriff's sale in due course.
Liz, do you have any questions? Normally you handle ours.
Well, this is... So, is there anybody in the mortgaged property?
To our knowledge, it is vacant. My client has retained mortgage contracting services, which has been inspecting it on a monthly basis, mowing the lawn and doing any other necessary maintenance. That entity has posted its contact information in the event that there are any apparent issues for anyone to contact them.
Are there any code violations on the property right now?
Not to my knowledge.
It hasn't been listed as lighted?
No.
Okay, and then what is, so if you get the vacant land, then when will this go up for sheriff's sale?
As soon as the deed were to be recorded, we can follow it up execution. That's usually about three months out in terms of scheduling and notices that are required by the sheriff's office.
Okay, and in the meantime, though, you will continue to keep the property up?
That's correct.
Okay, and how often?
At least on a monthly basis, it's inspected and the lawn is mowed as needed.
We've had a very wet spring, so how, what does it look like now? I haven't had a chance to drive by. Have you had a chance to drive by?
I have not personally seen it, but the pictures my client showed me from last week show that it has been properly mowed and that is done on an ongoing basis.
Okay, I'd be more comfortable if you said it was gonna be done on a weekly basis. Could you arrange for that?
I can instruct my client to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, council? Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Hello, good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Terrell, I actually got word.
You say Jerry Terrell?
Jarrett Terrell.
Jarrett?
Yep. And I actually just figured out about this repository list, our repository sales, and I just got this.
Excuse me, Jarrett, what is your address and what property are you looking to purchase?
Okay, my address is 713 East 25th, and the property I'm looking to get is 620 Wayne. Okay, I'm sorry, yes, 620 Wayne.
Thank you. Continue, please.
All right, it's a storefront with another apartment. I'm new to this and I saved all my money just to try to get this because I want to make my neighborhood better. My neighbors were saying, the people that used to own the store, was they never kept up on it. And I was trying to clean it up because my family, we all, my family, the neighborhood, we all knew the person that used to own it and they were like good people, but they wasn't good in keeping the neighborhood clean. So what I'm trying to do is redo that, keep everything clean, starting off with us, with the youth, if we show the youth that everything is nice and keep it that way, we can continue with that because before we all moved in there, the neighborhood was always nice. So I'm just trying to restart this trend over again and get it going.
And so are you gonna use the storefront as a store, do you think, or?
Yes, ma'am.
And you'll have the store or you'll rent it to somebody?
I have the store, well, me and my family will run it, but, because I work right now, but it would be in my family.
And do you have an estimate on how much the work will cost to bring this property back so that it's not a wreck?
Uh, no more than $9,000, less, probably like five, because I already have most of the stuff done. All I have to really do is make an appointment for electrical inspector to come check on electric, but we had like the apartment, the house, it's ran good. The house is done, it's just the store, just need a little bright stuff to be done to it.
And do you have resources to get that done and then like sort of a timeline when you'll get it done?
Yes, ma'am, I do. I have this, my buddy, he works, he's a constructor, he works for Ularis Morris Construction and he does everything, so.
Okay. It sounds like a good project, maybe you could invite us over to see it when you're done with it, as an example of what could be done in a neighborhood, okay?
Sure. Mr. Terrell, real quick, can you give the address again of the property, the storefront?
Uh, 620?
620 Wayne Street?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Is there anyone else here this morning to speak upon a repository sale? Anyone else for a repository sale? Hearing none, that brings us to citizens to be heard. Oh, there is one more?
Thank you. My name is Patricia Newby and I reside at 750.
Pull your mic down, ma'am, thank you.
I reside at 750 East 25th Street and the property that I'm interested about is at 752-754 East 25th. It was a burned down house. The lady that owned the house, she died in the fire and there's no one, she died in 2016, and no one is keeping that property up and it's so close to my property, it's like a jungle over there now and I have to almost like fight every year to try and get someone out there to cut it. So I called it, I called it the code enforcement, he said they can only do it one time a year and then there's a lien on it, on it whenever they do it. So I called again this year about it, he said that it takes, gotta go through all the procedures and then he's gonna have to put another lien on it and that's gonna take months, he said. So that place over there is, the weeds are so high, it's higher than the average privacy fence. It's like, I mean, it's so, it is terrible and it's so close to my house and I wanted to purchase the property, because I asked to see if I could purchase it, you know, part of it. They told me, no, I couldn't do part of it because it's on such a small lot, it'd be best to do the whole thing. But since the grandmother passed, there's a, I went down yesterday to the register of wills and she opened it up and she found that the granddaughter's name is on that, but she doesn't do anything with it and nobody seemed to do anything to her about it because there's no taxes been paid on it since the grandmother passed. It's like $3,000 in back taxes and I think the city demoed the house when it tore it down, it's like $11,000, but nothing is being done.
So it's like two empty lots, is what you're saying?
Yes, I think size is like 135 in length and 33 or 34 in width and it's just, it's just there, it's just there. And I've tried to sell my property shortly, I think my property went up for sale before the lady died, but then after that happened, my property just dropped down to zero. Nobody wants to buy living next to a jungle, you know, and so I just, I just didn't know what else to do, so I said that I would come down here and talk with you people about it to see what can be done.
Is it actually, you are actually buying it through the $250?
No, I can't buy it, they said, because it still belongs to, it has to go off a tax sale, they said, and it still belongs to whoever's on that, on that will.
So you need some help in navigating the system to figure out how to get that property next to you, even if you don't purchase it, how to get it cleaned up so it's not impacting your property values and your neighborhood, correct?
Right, mice are all in my, in my house from it, you know, because it's just terrible.
And you said that code enforcement said they could only clean it up once a year?
Once a year, and like you said before, it's been raining regularly this year and every time it rains, I mean, it's up, up, up.
Okay, so this isn't a repository sale, but we need someone to follow up immediately with this property owner?
Ma'am, did they say that they had to start the process over every year about cutting the grass and everything?
Yes, that's what he told me. He said that they can only do it one time a year and when they do it, a lien goes on it when they do it and that can only be done once a year and it has to go through a process and that could take months.
Yeah, I'm concerned, Renee, can you look into that? I've had nothing but problems with the code enforcement, I'm not welcome up there no more. So would you look into the matter and, I mean, these are issues that should not be big issues, but you know, it's part of our quality of life that we're trying to do for the city.
And what I don't understand is why, if the granddaughter's name is on this will because the grandmother is deceased, how come the city doesn't do anything to her about, at least trying to keep the grass cut?
That's my question too.
It's like nobody's doing anything, the city's not responsible, she's acting like she's not responsible and the grandmother's deceased, so who is responsible?
I mean, we're doing it as a courtesy, but it seems like whoever owns it should be the one that's being, you know, be, you know, proposition to get it done.
Right.
Mr. Witherspoon?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think this is a rare situation that we have to deal with and I would ask administration to tell code enforcement or whoever is responsible, get out there, cut it down, don't tell me about once a year, let this once a year be once a year. It's a problem, you're bringing rodents into this lady's home and it's gonna be more than mice before you know it. I suggest we do that expeditiously, but no longer than the next four days, my suggestion.
Ma'am, if you could please leave your name and number with the clerk's office, the lady's in there, I'm sure they'll pass it on to the administration to at least get you some answers, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you kindly. Brings us to citizens to be heard.
Good morning, Mr. President, Erie City Council, Shember Administration, fellow Erieites. Happy Pride. We are looking forward to this year's Pride at the end of this month. I know we are hoping for a big success as lovers, dreamers, allies, those who care on how we treat one another are united. Together we will march and hold hands with the ones who we love. Speaking of treating others the way that we want to be treated with dignity and respect, love wins today. This landmark historical legislation begins the new era of policymaking, perception, and we the people. We have walked through our own dark tunnels to see the light shine at the end because that beacon of hope, faith, and love allows our true colors to shine. Now, I want to stop there. I'm talking to citizens to be heard. There are people in this chamber that are hypocrites and they preach theology about the golden rule, treating people with dignity and respect. That's what we need to be doing. This individual is a theology representation of the LGBT community and if we preach the golden rule, if we preach love, acceptance, we should be about it. Put your money where your mouth is. Growing up in a rust belt small town America as a closeted boy and today as an openly gay human, my faith-based theology of love, acceptance, feeling that you belong, and the golden rule spoke to me, plus possibly us. I hope this legislation wakes our calling to service, to civil engagement, changing our engagement on how we treat one another, to break down the barriers with a non-implicative bias of inclusion, period. When we talk about being inclusive, do not exclude anyone under any circumstances today. This conversion therapy ban will allow the LGBT youth to be themselves and they are included in this discussion. Thank you to all those who listen, who stood with me, who speak for the silent and not the silent anymore. I'm very humbled by this and this experience gives me more leverage to continue our mission, purpose, and commitment for accountability, transparency, compassion, and service, and to inspire a consensus building to empower Erie. The selflessness are my true colors. We have individuals in here that attacked me two years ago, saying I harassed them, and then they preach about acceptance, about God, about faith. My faith taught me to treat all God's children with dignity and respect and that it goes with adults too. I'm getting tired of the LGBT community tearing me down. I'm fighting the good fight, just like you. Thank you for passing and hopefully this happens today because this begins a new era of inclusive policymaking, like I said. And also, I just would like to say that on Friday, I will be having a press conference about the Flag Day event with the Erie County Chapter of National Flag Foundation. I have a big surprise for the city of Erie, so I strongly advise everyone to possibly attend this press conference at 9:00 AM here in City Hall Chambers. Because on Flag Day, when we gather at Perry Square, there's gonna be a big announcement for the summer. Promises made, promises kept.
My name is Michelle Tome, 9751 Edinburgh Road. I want to first thank you for showing the moral integrity, for recognizing conversion therapy for what it truly is, a form of child abuse, and voting to ban this harmful practice. And since child abuse laws cover all, this also holds clergy accountable. I also want to speak to proposed policies and ordinances such as LERTA that are being considered to improve and revitalize the city. In politics, we have phrases known as dog whistles, such as how tough-on-crime has a deeper meaning of institutional racism in the justice system, and family values has the deeper meaning of anti-LGBTQA policies. City Council has used the language family-friendly in its suggestions for ways to revitalize the city, and I am cautious in my understanding of that language's potential to have the deeper meaning of gentrification. I'm a white woman from the suburbs and I have plenty of places designed with my needs in mind. In fact, most places are designed with my needs in mind. The city of Erie is not my space and it does not need to be another space designed for me. I challenge the council to consider the needs of its diverse residents as it continues its plans to revitalize the city.
Thank you.
My name is Nikki Knopf Snyder, I'm representing the Erie County Department of Health. On behalf of the Erie County Department of Health, I would like to thank Mayor Shember and his staff for their efforts to improve the health of all residents, especially our children, by working to make all the city's parks and playgrounds tobacco-free. I would also like to extend my sincere gratitude to City Council for considering this crucial policy measure. We are proud of the leadership the city of Erie has shown on this issue and look forward to the city joining Young Lungs at Play, a statewide initiative that aims to eliminate exposure to secondhand smoke in outdoor public places, especially places where children play. This is an important health initiative for our community, an estimated 50,000 Americans die each year from lung cancer and heart disease attributable to secondhand smoke exposure. Secondhand smoke exposure also causes over 1 million illnesses in children each year. Children are at particular risk for asthma, respiratory infections, and cardiovascular disease when exposed to tobacco smoke. Secondhand smoke contains over 7,000 chemicals with more than 250 of them known to be toxic or carcinogenic. The Environmental Protection Agency classifies secondhand smoke as a Class A carcinogen that is a substance known to cause cancer in humans. In the Surgeon General reports, there is no safe level of secondhand smoke exposure. Even brief exposures can be harmful. There is indisputable evidence that implementing 100% smoke-free environments is the only way to fully protect our community from the harmful effects of secondhand smoke. Outdoor tobacco use and its waste have environmental health impacts as well. Cigarette butts are one of the most littered items in the world. Small children and animals are at risk of swallowing, choking, or burning themselves with discarded butts and poisoning themselves with nicotine. Tobacco waste also has the potential to poison our waterways. When washed into creeks and streams, tobacco waste is a toxic pollutant that takes decades to decompose. Tobacco-free park policies reduce unsightly tobacco litter and its damaging impacts while providing children with clean and healthy places to play. Policy initiatives like Young Lungs at Play are key strategies and effective methods to limit the exposure to the dangers of secondhand smoke, protect the environment, and to protect the health of all. The Erie County Department of Health will continue to support the work of Mayor Shember and his staff, as well as City Council, as they create tobacco-free policies and implement the Young Lungs at Play program in each of the city's parks.
Thank you.
My name is Freda Tepfer, I live at 1738 West 23rd Street in Erie. I'm a homeowner, I'm a taxpayer, I'm a certified orientation and mobility specialist. I also want to commend the members of the City Council, especially Councilmember Schaff, who I know has been working on this for a long time for the anti-conversion therapy ban. I also want to bring up my repeated concern about the ongoing problems related to private and city-administered construction and safe pedestrian access. I forwarded to Renee Lamis and some others just this morning a problem, a couple of doors east of Methodist Towers where there is a visually impaired independent traveler living. I stopped and talked to the people from New River Electronics and said, they said, "What are we supposed to do?" And I said, "You put a bar across the bottom, there's a regulation." I took a picture and I sent them. This is going on all over the city. I send pictures and emails to Masala and Leanne Parmenter constantly. Sometimes I get emails back, sometimes I don't. In my neighborhood, somebody has had tape just flagging around a hole in the ground for now it's 13 days, waiting for them to pour concrete. This should not be going on in the city. This should not be going on at 39th and Melrose, a block away from where a blind traveler lives. And that's a city-administered project and that's been going on for about 13 days. The city should include something in the LERTA to specify any project should have a plan saying how there will be safe pedestrian access during construction. I understand and I really support where the health department is coming from, however, I know that people living downtown don't have backyards, they have nowhere to go. So they need to have a decent place to smoke. It's very kind of ironic that on the northeast, southeast, well, the corner of Perry Square there, across from Erie Insurance, on the east side, there's a little one of those stands for putting out your butts. That's because Erie Insurance people go there. Erie Insurance has lots of open space, why do their smokers go there? Maybe there should be a designated area for the people who live downtown and the Erie Insurance people on some property that Erie Insurance owns. Will this ban address the fact that the people who smoke at Calamari's are right next door to a daycare center? I agree that there needs to be some safe places to be, but how are we going to accommodate the people who live downtown and don't have a backyard? the people who live downtown and don't have a backyard? I also want to commend the city for moving forward on feasibility study related to stormwater. I want you to realize that the recently passed alternative lawn regulations will allow people to grow gardens and to manage their landscapes in a way that actually protects stormwater from chemicals, intercepts more stormwater, and reduces the need for leaf blowers and other things in our environment. But I really would like the city to take seriously their responsibility to ensure safe pedestrian access during construction. I haven't had most of my comments responded to. I don't go through the City Grows online because it's really a nuisance if you're somewhere and taking pictures to try to go through that. I do talk to Mas a lot. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm John Bookman with the Erie Downtown Partnership, located at 140 East 5th Street here in downtown Erie, here representing more than 600 business and property owners in our downtown proper. For the past week, our organization has been partnered with the Pennsylburn Downtown Center to host a key economic and innovative conference in our community that deals with where we were, where we are, and where we're going in the future. Mayor Schember and his staff, amongst others, and City and County Council have been active in this conference, and we are very proud of our city for being host to this conference that drew in close to 300 people, in my capacity and others in other communities, that are here to learn about what Erie has done, but more importantly, what it's looking to do into the future. Today, we have an opportunity to exude our leadership, yet another step forward in bettering our community, not just for a brighter today, but for a brighter tomorrow. The ordinances that we have in front of us are opportunities for us to continue to look forward to truly, truly improve our communities for generations to come. Thank you.
I'm John Mear Jackson, and I'm at 1914 June Street.
Pull your mic down a little bit. Thank you.
I live at 1914 June Street. First of all, this morning, I'd like to thank Mr. Kowalski.
That's close enough.
I'd like to thank you for bringing to attention, you know, about the yard I live right next to. I've been living there for seven years and dealing with, you know, nobody living there, and I really appreciate you at least getting a yard mower once this year. Another thing I'd like to bring to your attention, when I brought in Mr. Kowalski attention, is a lot over at 742 East 21st. I mean, that's supposed to be a residential area, and they have all those junk cars, you know, on the lot. I'm like, you know, that shouldn't be allowed in a residential area, period.
What's the street number, 743?
742 East 21st.
Okay.
I mean, I think it should be a number of cars you should be allowed to have, and that's it. That makes the whole area just look really bad. And another thing I'd like to bring to your attention, I'd like to thank Ms. Liz. I think they said she the one that spoke up about this ordinance that the mayor wanted, you know, have banning, you know, drinking and smoking in Perry Square and Griswold Park. I agree with Ms. Allen, there needs to be a hearing for the people that live down here in this area and get their, you know, outlook on it, you know, what they feel about it. But thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me here today. My name is Jasmine Flores. I live at 631 East 9th Street, Apartment A. I'm a personal caregiver, and I work with a lot of seniors and disabled individuals and veterans as well. I think we need to not penalize people for smoking in public areas. I think we need to designate certain areas for them to smoke in because a lot of these older seniors are dealing with anxiety, stress, PTSD, and sadly, cigarettes help them relax. It's not healthy for everyone. I personally don't smoke tobacco, but my grandparents and my parents did, and that showed me not to, because I didn't want that habit. But there's a big demographic of people who they didn't have that viewpoint because smoking was something that was appealed to them, especially with all the advertisement and all the representatives passing laws for smoking to be everywhere. Right now, we have a lot of people who are renters downtown. They live in these apartment buildings such as Boston Store, Richmond Arms, Tulio Towers, and they do not allow smoking inside. So these individuals need to go somewhere to smoke. They tend to go to Perry Square. They are on fixed incomes, and them being fined and penalized for smoking, something that is, that they can do legally, I think that it's wrong to fine them. I think we need to designate certain areas, because if you have a certain area where people can smoke, the more than likely they'll go there, especially if they know that they could get penalized. I think completely banning it from parks and Perry Square is kind of insulting, especially considering when we have all the events downtown. We can drink openly, we can smoke openly, and you have bars who let people smoke outside on the patio. So I think that we really need to take the residents into consideration, especially considering they are the ones living down there, and they're the ones that are going to be affected by this, considering if they have too many fines, they're probably going to end up in jail, they're not going to be able to afford to get out, and then they're going to lose their apartments, and then we have a homeless problem. So I'm just saying, all the dominos are connected, are connected, and we need to make sure that we're taking that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Dr. John Diamond. I'm rising in opposition to Ordinance 34-2019, and I don't want to confuse the issues here. This has nothing to do with theology, morality. This has to do with the rule of law. All right? As an Air Force veteran, I spent eight years in the United States Air Force. I took an oath to support and defend the Constitution, same oath that you guys took. All right? My job, I don't care if I disagree with you 100%, I can disagree with what you have to say, but I will fight to the death for your right to say it. Okay? A lot of people have done this throughout history, including Martin Luther King. And that's the one thing that we have to recognize, we're dealing with the rule of law today, we are not dealing with issues of morality. All right? So let me explain to you very clearly what it means to be an American. We get that right from the Declaration of Independence. It says, "We hold these truths self-evident, that all men are created equal, and that they are endowed by their Creator with certain inalienable rights." That means rights that cannot be taken away by you, by the Supreme Court, by the federal government, nobody. Those rights are given by God. They are God-given rights. To secure these rights, governments are instituted among men. Your job, if somebody asks you, "What is your number-one job as a government official?", the answer that should come out of your mouth is, "My job is to protect your God-given, constitutionally-protected rights." It's not to pass budgets, it's not to pave roads. Your number-one function as a government official, who has taken an oath to God, to support and defend the Constitution, your number-one job is to support the God-given rights of everybody equally. So I want to share with you exactly which rights you are about to violate with this statute. The very first one is the First Amendment to the United States Constitution, which says, "Congress shall make no law respecting the establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech." This ordinance both violates the Free Exercise Clause of the Constitution, it also abridges the freedom of speech of the people of this city. The United States Constitution is not the only Constitution that has this. The Pennsylvania Constitution, which you took an oath to support and defend, does the same thing, only the Commonwealth has separated this into two clauses, Number 3 and Number 7. For the sake of time, I'm just going to get right to it. Religious freedom, no human authority, that includes you, can in any case whatsoever, that includes this, can control or interfere with the rights of conscience. You do not have the authority to pass any law that would require me by law to violate my conscience based on religious beliefs. You have no authority to do that. Doesn't matter what position you take, or which side you take, you are forbidden by law to do that. The freedom of speech, Number 7 in our Constitution. "The free communication of thought and opinion is one of the invaluable rights of man, and every citizen may freely speak, write, and print on any subject." This ordinance that you are seeking to pass not only violates federal law, it violates constitutional law, it violates the United States Constitution, and the Pennsylvania Constitution. So what I'm going to ask you to do today is I'm going to ask you to vote no on this. Ms. Arrington, Mr. Jones, and Mr. Witherspoon, I would speak to you very clearly. You have to understand that this is no different than what they did in the South with the Jim Crow laws. My biggest idol, Martin Luther King, was thrown in jail, was thrown in jail because... Martin Luther King was thrown in jail because the Jim Crow laws of the South said it was illegal to say that blacks and whites are equal. Anytime that you restrict anybody's freedom of speech, you are on the road to tyranny. Everybody in this state, everybody in this country has the freedom of speech, and the freedom of religion, and the freedom of conscience. Now, I would again ask you to vote no on this. If you do not, then you have to understand what my duty is now as an American citizen. The Declaration of Independence continues, it says, "That when any form of government becomes destructive to these ends, it is the people's right and their duty to throw off such a government and provide new guards for their future liberty." I am prepared to file a civil rights lawsuit against this council. Should you go against this and you violate my God-given and constitutionally-protected rights, what you are doing is, what you would be doing is illegal, and it is also a violation of federal law. Now, I want to read to you straight from the Department of Justice, and I want to read you, remember, this is the civil rights legislation...
I'm sorry, could you, I did not hear your name or your address. I'm sorry, because you were talking so fast, but could you give us your name and address?
Yes, ma'am. Let me find that.
I'm sorry. You aren't looking at your phone for your name and address, are you?
I'm representing my church, or actually, a series of churches in the area.
Okay, so what is your name?
John, Dr. John Diamond, I'm the Director of Peacemaker's Outreach.
How could you spell your last name?
Diamond, like the ring.
And what is your address?
1102 Gore Road.
Okay, that's your church or your home?
Church.
What's your home address?
I live in Watsonburg.
Thank you.
Let me just say this, because I represent a lot of people. I represent a lot of people, ma'am.
Sir, the buzzer did go off.
Oh, I didn't hear it.
You were asked a question, you got another 30 seconds if you want to close, finish.
Yeah, let me just close up. Title code 242 says deprivation of rights under color of law. Who, under color of law, that's what you're doing, law, state, or ordinance, that's what you're doing, subjects any person in any state or Commonwealth to the deprivation of rights or privileges or immunities secured by the Constitution, shall be fined under this title and imprisoned not more than one year. It is a violation of our civil rights for you to pass this legislation. So at the very least, I would ask you to table this until you talk to your attorneys. Thank you very much.
Good morning. My name is Roger Fenton, and I live on 4312 Longview Avenue here in Erie, and I am a member and a deacon in Garden Heights Baptist Church. Several of us have taken counseling courses, and also, sometime in the future, we would like to have a counseling service in our church. So I feel that this ordinance for conversion therapy would be detrimental to us sharing the Word of God, the truth of Scripture, as we would like to when we talk to people. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning.
Hey, good morning. Chuck Nelson, 646 West 9th Street. With the summertime, there's a few different things that make my summers a little more enjoyable. We like to get to that Sunset Concert Series, and we go to a lot of the live music venues outside downtown. One of the things I'll admit is that I was surprised to see this ordinance, because I didn't realize that we already couldn't drink in city parks. I'm used to going to them at Press Isle, so we always get our little Nalgene bottle, and we fill it up with a little white wine, because you can't drink there. So we put it in the Nalgene bottle, and we sneak in there, and we drink while we have the concert anyways. I never really worry about it, to be honest, the people that run the concert, they actually know about it, and it's become a bit of a running joke with us. So when we go to concerts at Frontier Park, I can walk there, so we bring a second Nalgene bottle, because I don't have to drive back, and we can have a little more fun at the concert. And I enjoy myself. I noticed, I didn't realize that I was allowed to drink at Frontier Park, so I'm actually relieved to see that from my own personal point. But now I see this ordinance for Perry Square and Griswold Park, and I'm just curious about the reason of those two parks specifically. Like, I wouldn't mind not being able to drink at Frontier Park, or at least not legally being allowed to drink at Frontier Park, because the Nalgene things are never going to get me bugged, no cops ever going to stop me at Frontier Park, because to be honest, they don't walk through Frontier Park during the concerts. No one's going to bug my family about me sneaking drinks there. But the people that are in the downtown parks that drink, I feel like they're going to get bugged. You could pass this ordinance for every park in the city and still probably achieve the same outcome that it appears that you're hoping to have with this. But it seems like to directly get those downtown parks seems to be that you're targeting the downtown people. Maybe they drink in a way that's less socially acceptable than me pounding two Nalgenes at Frontier Park, but I think the social acceptance of, you know, the way I might drink differently than them is an issue. I think it goes back to the kind of people that you have living in those communities, rather than, "When I drink at Frontier Park versus the kinds of people that you have drinking downtown." It's an issue of brown bags versus Nalgene's. And in any of those cases of differences, I think you're looking at a classist and possibly racist issue on those. If you want to pass the thing to all of the parks in the city, I won't say that it's, you know, classist or racist, but I'm still not going to get in trouble for it, because no one's going to stop me and ask any questions, and the cops aren't in those parks anyways. But as it stands now, it just looks really, it just looks really bad from where I read it. But that's all I have to share about it. If you see me at the park at any of the concerts, feel free to tap into my Nalgene with me. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Hello, this is Ron Stempka. I live at 3925 Marion Street, Erie, PA, and most of you people know me. Kaz knows me well, and you, and you know me too, and the guy on the top there. So what's going on up here? I said, you know, the first of the year, I didn't hear nothing about $11 million short. No show Joe didn't say nothing. And new mayor gets, "Oh, I'm $11 million on home." He was the CFO at PNC. He was on City Council, and he didn't know what was coming up and down the street. Where the heck did $11 million come from, and debt? Can somebody answer that question? Someone say something up there.
This isn't a question-and-answer type week.
Well, she was talking to people, the woman on the end there.
I asked the person his name and address, which we need for our record, okay?
All right, then.
And we did ask about the repository sales, because at that point, that woman, it turned out not to be a repository sale, but I was trying to clarify that.
Okay, now, the mayor hired two people that do all this talking for her, is that right? I'm pointing at him.
Once again, Mr. Stempka, this isn't...
This would be an open, you know, I've been coming before you guys were even around. Kaz's been here forever. He knows where I am. I'm asking questions, and we don't get no answers up here. Everybody's in the, Erie's a eastward city. Erie is a direct eastward city. If the city would put more effort into getting jobs in the city, instead of putting all that money downtown, and putting all that money down here at the square, let's get something jobs here. I haven't heard nothing about coming into Erie, jobs. Jobs is number one. God should look at that. Now, we were, now, me and that young guy up there, and Kaz, we had the good times, and Erie was great. You can get, if you can get your job, you quit, by noon, you had a new job. Am I right? Okay, on another issue, the foreigners coming in. Is there any, how many are allowed in here at one time? Well, when I lived on 18th Street, there was a quota, and they had to take a physical. They had to take a physical, had to be brought in, and everything. Now, they coming in, and I don't hear nothing. There's no quota. How many came into Erie? How many people left Erie? About 2,500 people. Citizens are very left in the last three years. Now you got all these foreigners coming in, and now Clinton, he said to the government, "Anybody that's sponsoring has to take over the responsibility of their benefits," like hospitalization, their food, stuff like that. Now, President now, he reenacted, so anybody that comes into the United States now, their sponsor has to take care of them. Where is, Erie's getting slaughtered with foreigners. I grew up on 18th Street. They all came here, but there was a quota. There wasn't that many coming. How many people came into Erie? Five, 6,000 foreigners came in? Am I right? My grandfather was a Polish guy. He came over from Poland, okay? But right now, they're taking housing away, they get all the food stamps. This is baloney. We gotta do something to slow this down. I don't know, and this is stupid, not asking questions, you know? I like to have some answers. You too, brother. You too. I gotta see you somewhere. I gotta see you somewhere. Okay, you too, Kaz, don't be laughing down there, and you too up there. But we gotta do something in the city here, we gotta draw jobs. Forget about the downtown. You guys think all the people could come downtown? Make that Bike Week coming, that's why there are a lot of people. And, uh, what was the name, I wanted to take care of the Manufacturing Association. What was his name? Pontillo. Okay, a couple of years ago, I brought up on the radio, I said, that he gets twenty-five percent to take? Oh, man, we had the hottest line in Erie. And when I talked three days ago, they said, you owe him apology. You know, and he can all apologize. People tell me on the street and I bring it up, that's all I do, give apology. I think I must have been nuts to even say that. You guys know where I am, Kaz knows it. But boys, we gotta do something with the city here. Get jobs. I tried to buy, I tried to buy the Comber Downs, and that was open. Bob Planting was the dumbest guy in the world. I had millionaires in Houston wanting to come up here. State Farm Insurance President, a bunch of other guys. You got any ideas? Come down, we'll get to mine, we got ten million dollars. Bob Planting said, I'm tearing it down, I'm making industrial park. What do we have out there now? Woods. Okay, boys, you better start thinking a little harder here, you know what I mean?
Thank you for your time.
Take care.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Rich McCarty, 3635 Buckthorn Drive. I'm here this morning as a clergy person in the United Church of Christ. I'm also a professor in religion, ethics, and sexuality at Mercyhurst University with a PhD in religious studies from the University of Iowa, and I stand in full support of the conversion ban therapy that you're considering today for passage. I think that there is a fundamental misunderstanding among some of our fellow citizens about what the ordinance is passing. You are not telling me what I can say in my pulpit. You are not saying what I do in pastoral counseling. The ordinance says very clearly that this is an ordinance banning any type of conversion therapy for minors who are seeking help from state-certified mental health professionals. That is a fundamental difference. I would be the first one to stand up and say that we ought to protect, as a First Amendment right, anybody's right to preach what they will in their private house of faith. But I think that what this council is considering, and that many citizens have been fighting for, for a long time in this city, is that the ban that you are enacting is a ban that has been enacted elsewhere. That we make sure that those who are certified by the state of Pennsylvania as mental health professionals are holding to the standards of their disciplines and of their fields. The American Psychology Association, the American Psychiatric Association have all said for a very long time that reparative therapy can do irreparable harm. If an adult seeks reparative therapy as somebody who struggles with their sexual orientation, they are free to do so, but we're talking about minors whose consciences are not well-equipped. We're talking about minors who are often condemned by a large portion of society gratefully shrinking each generation. But we have to make sure that we keep on the table that the focus is only on, as the ordinance says, state-certified mental health professionals. We would never walk into a Catholic church and tell a priest to stop talking about contraception. We would never go into any house of faith and tell them that they can't preach from their scriptures or from their sacred tradition. We're talking about something very specific here. And I think that if we, as faith leaders, can't see the difference between what the state certifies and what we do in our own houses of faith, then we're actually confusing the endeavor of the republic. We have the First Amendment so that we can be free, we have liberty of conscience, but we do not have liberty of accommodation when it comes to the public square. I can no more tell you what to believe or do as a minister than you can tell me. In our houses of faith, we get to talk about that and debate it. So, I hope that you do support this ban on conversion therapy for minors, and I hope that it is a unanimous vote for the sake of the republic and for the sake of the liberties that we fight for, which are broad on the legal level. One last comment. When it comes to legality of conversion bans, because you have worded it so well, we know that it's not going to go to anything like the Supreme Court of the United States. In fact, as we see in the media, the Supreme Court has actually denied to hear the case out of New Jersey, because your ban is written exactly as theirs did. Now, if there was another ban in a different city or a different municipality that said somehow that you or the, the officers of the city are going to police churches or other communities of faith, I'd be right there to stand up against that. But we have something that is fine-tuned, it's legal, and we should support it for the sake of liberty and for the sake of our children, so that they are not harmed. And I appreciate you hearing my point of view. Thank you.
Michael Keys, 3612 Reed Street, Erie, PA. I'd like to address a couple of things that are on the agenda. First, LERTA. I would like council to pass a resolution not to vote on LERTA until after the financial consultant has ruled. I think that, you know, we would be derelict in our duty if we made decisions impacting the long-term financial output or input into the city before we know the complete state of our city. So, that's just something you can consider, waiting until the financial consultant rules before you rule on the LERTA expansion. Drinking and smoking in the parks, I agree, young lungs are at play, but I also agree that some of our parks are very large and there could be a space carved out for people who do smoke that is far enough away from the other people where it's not an encumbrance on those people. And drinking downtown, you know, I think it's kind of disingenuous to say that you can get a permit to drink on these certain days, but on these other certain days, you can't drink. And if you don't have a permit, you can't drink. What's that's doing is that's favoring people who may visit or, you know, come here, you know, as travelers or tourists above the citizens. And no laws and no policy should be placed above the rights of the citizens. If they come, they abide by the same rules. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keys.
It's on?
It is on.
Okay, we'll try this. Wow. Um, I thought I was coming up here to say one thing, and I think I'm saying another. Um, I, I, I'll get the other things out of the way. Um, the ordinance.
Please, ma'am.
Oh, I'm.
Name it, that's okay.
Katie Eigenlob, White, 2722 East Avenue, Erie. Um, when I was at the last meeting and saw the ordinance appropriating the sum of five million, I was curious, and I asked one of the council members who told me that it's something that the state awarded and it just passes through the city? Is that, I, I hope that I understand that correctly. I went to Pat Harkins' office, as was suggested, and I put in a request, asking to know more about the redevelopment assistance capital program. Obviously, it's a big chunk of change. If it passes through the city, don't we have some responsibility in making sure that those funds are appropriated correctly? Because why else would they even include the city? They could just go, I mean, again, I don't know enough about how this works yet, because I haven't gotten the documents. But I guess I want to make an appeal for when, and I'm, I'm not saying that Scott Enterprises is a pickpocket, but it is true that a person doesn't risk arrest by picking a pocket from someone who's poor. And because we're all state taxpayers, that five million is coming out of our pocket. This is a for-profit organization. I guess my question is, why haven't we found creative ways to get a hold of that money for some of the biggest needs that our city has? Um, I'm going to find out more, but it just distresses me that these two five million-dollar grants are going to a for-profit business. If they're a good business, they don't need that much from the state. And I'm hoping that, and I'm hoping in the future, because I don't know if it's still possible to do this, but there should be CBAs. We should be getting something out of this to make sure that people are being given a living wage, that they're, it does, jobs do matter, that they're hiring locally. Okay. Um, and then, I, as a, as a clergy person, I also support the conversion therapy ban. Regardless of one, where one stands on their interpretation of Scripture, young people do commit suicide. I'll tell you, I'd rather risk a lawsuit than, than the moral trauma of knowing that I looked the other way when a child was traumatized by being told by a respected, by someone they respected, that who they were, that they weren't created right. But what I find myself about to speak to is the question of foreigners. I feel that I have something to weigh in on that, having been a volunteer for a year at the International Institute, um, back in, um, 2007, and was surprised that our city was so incredibly diverse. That experience changed my life. I ended up going on staff as community outreach coordinator for three and a half years. I thought, what an amazing city. If you discover Erie, you can discover the world. I did not know that twenty percent of our community has come here as refugees since, with the Bosnian crisis, twenty percent. Now, those are older figures based on a hundred thousand people. Our population has dropped, and that doesn't include all the amazing immigrants that work here in the city, that teach in our colleges, that work at GE, that work at Erie Insurance, that work at our hospitals. I think we have something to celebrate. We have been foreigners, and since we showed up, since we showed up on this Native American um, community, coast. We are a city of foreigners, but we're now new Americans. And I have to say, I just, I'm just distressed by that, because I appreciate the new administrations leaning in, showing up at one table, being in the businesses and places and their initiatives to reach out, but I think we need to go further in a way that really celebrates. I don't like seeing minority businesses being shut down. I don't like what it looks like. I don't like the optics of that board of directors being all white and male, speaking for our city. We really need some serious conversations, because there are those who live outside the city who profit by keeping this city white and attempting to make it gentrified. Um, so, as a, as a poet, I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm just, I don't hear that kind of talk very often, and it's just painful for me. When you look at all the new businesses, and my idea around Discovery, Erie, Discover the World was to survey the plethora of new businesses brought by every new immigrant group. They're leaning in, they left the comforts of their home and country, they're survivors, whether they were refugees or someone just chasing their dream. And that's really what's kept Erie vibrant, whether they moved up from, from Birmingham, Alabama, or whether they came from across the ocean. And I think it's time for us to take great, 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 great pride in how phenomenally diverse we are, and to stand up to the fear, to stand up to the fear of things that, that caused someone to say something like that.
Thank you.
Hi, Randy Barnes, 109 Walton Point, Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. It's good to see some people from Watsonburg, Edinburgh Road, Harbor Creek, Buckthorn on Milcreek, uh, speaking today. I don't know if you saw the special report. That one? I don't know if you saw the special report, Erie Times News head, front headline, inner city Erie plagued by vacant properties? Well, you didn't see that today, that was the headline December 1st, 1996. So, about twenty-three years ago, inner cities, Erie plagued by vacant properties. Let me ask you, how's that LERTA working out since 1996? We've had LERTA continuing for, for seems like generations. How's it working out? Now, you may feel good about passing LERTA, and I'm sure there's a couple of developers that are kind of owed a favor by the administration, but in the big picture, how much more valuable land is there in the city? How many more Niagara points are there? There's ten million dollars worth of property on Niagara Point. How many more Niagara points are there? How many more Niagara piers are there? How many more residents are there on the west side, vacant land north of Sixth Street that can be built on? Now, you can pass this LERTA, and you can pat yourself on the back and say, we really did something, we really feel good about ourselves, we really accomplished something. You accomplish nothing. The mayor has said he hopes to have ten million dollars worth of new assessment in the first year. What does that do for you? It gets you a hundred thousand dollars of taxes in ten years. You're five million dollars in the hole every year since 2016, you've been borrowing five million dollars, and you, you committed to do that for the next two years. You're in the hole five million dollars every year when you pass your budget. You need five hundred million dollars worth of assessment to get five million dollars worth of taxes. Never gonna happen. You know what? The six of you and the one person that gets up and walks out when I leave, good for her, because she doesn't want to hear, because she knows it all. Haven't done anything on this budget. You know why? Because you've hired a two hundred thousand dollars for two people to come in and tell you what to do. You elect, we elected a mayor with fifty years of banking experience, and what's the first thing he does? Floats new bonds, borrows more money, puts the city further in debt, and hires someone to come in and tell you what to do, because the seven, the six of you and plus the girl that walks out every time I speak, and the administration doesn't know how to run a city, doesn't know how to pass a budget. And yeah, you have to protect our rights, but you can't protect our rights without a budget. In the past administration, this administration, the seven of you that have been elected, plus the girl that walks out every time I talk, that failed. You can't balance a budget without borrowing money. You just did it, you just borrowed sixteen million additional dollars to float you for the next three years. So, why is the big rush to pass the LERTA before you have the, the consultants come in that you've paid money to? You've paid them to get their advice. So, why not wait and see what their advice is? They may tell you, you gotta double down on LERTA, you gotta make it for twenty years, or fifteen, or twelve, or nine and a half. You don't know what they're going to say. But you're in a big rush to pass it, because you know what? We all need cheerleaders in this town, because we had Mr. Katz come in, cheerleading, tell us how good we are. We're the model. Last time I heard that was when the last administration said, we saved the city, I should go around and tell the state how we did it, because we're the model city, because we saved the city from financial distress. Ones, ones. So, every year now, since 2016, we're borrowing five million dollars to run the city. And that's not so bad, as long as you're paying ten million back, but you're not. You're borrowing five every year, and you're paying less than five back. So, you're going deeper in the hole every year, and why do you do that? Oh, you gotta buy police cars? Oh, let me ask you this. How many of you drive a 1999 car or truck? Probably none of you. You know why? Because cars and trucks don't last twenty years very well. But yet, we're willing to borrow money, bonds, to buy police cars. Do you think police cars last very well for twenty? Oh, I want to thank you. We don't have a police force in Harbor Creek, but you know, when I see those city of Erie police cars parked around Harbor Creek, that does deter, deter crime in Harbor Creek. And I thank you very much, and I thank all six of you, and I thank the woman that walks off every time I speak, because she doesn't have, she knows it all. She knows it all. But I thank you for allowing those police cars to come into Harbor Creek, because it really does help the crime situation. And there's not a lot of crime in Harbor Creek, and I think that's why you have people coming in here from Edinburgh, Harbor Creek, Watsonburg, Milcreek. Trying to give you a little advice, but the six of you and the one person that walks out every time I speak.
Mr. Barnes is the.
Knows it all. Hey, thank you very much.
I know.
Have any other citizens to be heard this morning? Any other citizens to be heard? Hearing nun, Rose.
Ordinances for final passage. Council House 16094, official ordinance number 342019, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Erie, Erie County, Pennsylvania prohibiting conversion therapy with minors, providing a penalty for violating the ordinance, providing for the repeal of insistent ordinances, providing for the severability of the ordinance, and providing the effective date of the ordinance. By Ms. Schobsec, by Ms. Allen.
Mr. President, Mr. President, excuse me, may I ask, Rose, can you, do you have the full ordinance in front of you?
Yes.
Available? Could we ask to have that read, just for clarity? I know we've had citizens with had some misunderstanding, or maybe there was some debate on what the content is, so I would be, I would like to request to have that read in its entirety.
Okay, hang on. Okay, hang on. Let me go check because it doesn't look like it's ending there, and I don't have anything more.
And the reason, while the clerk is going to get the, make sure she has all the information, I think sometimes when we don't, when we hear certain buzzwords, when we hear certain phrases, we think that is inclusive of everyone who may speak on that issue. And so, what we're looking to do today as a pastor, as a person in the faith community, again, I most definitely believe in the First Amendment and all that goes along with that, the right of freedom of speech. I will say that I don't think it's, we should be free from responsible speech, but that's for our own other debate. But the truth of the matter is, is that what we're doing today does not creep into the church house or the place of worship of any faith system. What we're looking to do is, is my understanding, and that's why I want to read it, because sometimes you just, you know, something might slip in or change. But we're talking about individuals who are providing therapy to minors that have a code of ethics, that have a system of expectations, laws, rules, standards that he or she must be in alignment with, right? So, whether it be state certified mental health professionals, and that's just good thing, that's good practice, and respectfully, as a pastor counseling, I should not be telling you what to do anyway. That's just my opinion. I get to have that because it's the First Amendment.
And Mr. President, can I just say something too? I just wanted to thank Reverend McCarty for his very clear statement about what this covers. I think he did a better job than I've done in trying to respond to some of the emails I've received, so I thank him for that information. I did know about the Supreme Court, I knew about the law that passed under Christie in New Jersey, and I know from our solicitor that this ordinance has been thoroughly vetted. But I thank him because he gave me some information that I will be able to use in responding to some of those emails. And I just wanted to, kind of as a follow up, I did not hear what that person said when he came up to the podium, I didn't hear his name, I heard him say doctor, and he did not say if he is a medical doctor. He did say that he's a pastor at a church. So, I just, that was the reason I wanted to know what his name was and where he lived and sort of really what his credentials were. But anyhow, thank you.
Mr. President, if I could finish very quickly, since Rose is back. So, but what I will say, as we read this and we'll get the clarity from our clerk, what rises to me is the potential gray area that a person who is operating in the ministry may also be a state certified mental health professional. And we're gonna have to find some language possibly to understand where the boundaries are in that area. I worked in the mental health field as well for 20 years, and there's some boundaries that when I'm in my pastoral or ministerial office, I'm still bound by certain things, mandated reporter, I mean, there's a variety and a litany of things. So, I think that this conversation today sparked something for me that I don't know if we need to look at, or we can make some adjustments if we find there's some legalities that we missed. I'm voting in favor of this, but let me, let her read that. But again, I wanted to bring that up. Well, I would have been done, but she interrupted.
It's all good. Rose?
Okay, I'm gonna just start after the preamble. Whereas the City Council hereby finds that being lesbian, gay, bisexual, or transgender is part of the natural spectrum of human identity and is not a disease, disorder, or illness, whereas conversion therapy has been rejected by every mainstream medical and mental health organization, including the American Psychological Association, American Psychiatric Association, American Medical Association, American Academy of Pediatrics, American Academy of Child and Adolescent Psychiatry, American Counseling Association, American Psychoanalytic Association, American School of Counselor Association, American School Health Association, National Association of Social Workers, and the Pan American Health Organization. Whereas conversion therapy leads to critical health risks, including anxiety, depression, decreased self-esteem, substance abuse, homelessness, and suicide, whereas minors are especially vulnerable to the harms associated with conversion therapy, and whereas the city has compelling interest in protecting the physical and psychological well-being of minors, including lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender youth, and in protecting its minors against exposure to serious harms caused by conversion therapy. Now, therefore be it, and it is hereby ordained and enacted by the City Council of the City of Erie, Erie County, Pennsylvania as follows. Section 1, definitions. The following words, terms, and phrases used, when used in this chapter shall have the meanings ascribed to them in this section, except for where the context clearly indicates a different meaning. Conversion therapy: any practice or treatment that seeks to convert one's sexual orientation or gender identity or expression, including efforts to change behaviors, or to eliminate or reduce sexual or romantic interactions or feelings toward individuals of the same sex. It does not include psychotherapies that provide assistance to a person undergoing gender transition, or that prove, provide accepted support in understanding of clients, or the facilitation of clients coping, social support, and identity exploration and development, including sexual orientation, neutral interventions to prevent or address unlawful conduct or unsafe sexual practices, and psychotherapies that do not seek to change sexual orientation or gender identity or expression. Mental health professional: an individual who is licensed, certified, or registered under the laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to provide to an individual or a group mental health services, including but not limited to, the assessment or improvement of mental, emotional, psychiatric, psychological, or physiological, or psychosocial adjustment or functioning regardless of whether there is a diagnosable pre-existing disorder or disease. Mental health professionals include but are not limited to physicians specializing in the practice of psychiatry, psychologists, marriage and family therapists, licensed clinical social workers, professional clinical counselors, behavioral clinicians, or therapists, nurses, or any other persons offering such mental health service. Minor: a person less than 18 years of age. Section 2, prohibited acts. No mental health professional shall engage within the geographic boundaries of the City of Erie in conversion therapy with a minor without regard to whether the mental health professional is compensated or receives any form of remuneration for his or her services. Section 3, penalty. Any person violating any provision of this ordinance shall, upon conviction thereof, in summary proceeding, be sentenced for each violation to pay a fine of not more than $600 and cost of prosecution. B, in addition to any other remedy provided by this ordinance, the city may institute proceedings to restrain any violation of, or to require compliance with this ordinance. Section 4, repeal. All ordinance or resolutions, or parts, ordinances, or resolutions, insofar as they are inconsistent herewith, are hereby repealed and rescinded. Section 5, severability. In the event any provision, section, sentence, clause, or part of this ordinance shall be held to be invalid, such invalidity shall not affect or impair any of the remaining provisions, sections, sentences, clauses, or parts of this ordinance, it being the intent of the City of Erie that the remainder of the ordinance shall be and shall remain in full force and effect.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. And just for the sake of clarity, I think because of maybe some confusion in our audience and in this room, we had to do that, so you can go on with the president, I guess.
All right then, we're on call. Oh, wait, I gotta finish reading this. Okay. By Ms. Schaff, sec by Ms. Allen. The Council File Ordinance Number 16094, having been read, is hereby, first, I'm sorry, I had the wrong section. The Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16094, now known as Official File Ordinance Number 342019, be finally passed by the City Council.
Please, they haven't voted yet officially.
Ms. Allen, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kowalski, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarsky. City Council passed Official File Ordinance Number 342019, finally, by a seven, nay zero. Council File Number 16095, official ordinance number 352019. An ordinance appropriated in the sum of $5 million from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received as a redevelopment assistant capital program grant from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Office of the Budget, which will be utilized to assist Scott Enterprises in the construction of the Bayfront Harbor Place Hotel. By Mr. Jones, sec by Mrs. Arrington, the Council File Ordinance Number 16095, and now known as Official File Ordinance Number 352019, be finally passed by the City Council. Ms. Allen, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Jones, Mrs. Kowalski, Ms. Schaff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarsky. City Council passed Official File Ordinance Number 352019, finally, by a seven, nay zero. Council File 16096, official ordinance number 362019. An ordinance appropriated in the sum of $300,000 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue received from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development as a grant to the Enterprise Own Revolving Loan Fund, and will be utilized as a loan to the Renaissance Center for Elevator Renovation. By Mr. Jones, sec by Mrs. Arrington, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16096, and now known as Official File Ordinance Number 362019, be finally passed by the City Council. Ms. Allen, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Jones, Mrs. Kowalski, Ms. Schaff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarsky. City Council passed Official File Ordinance Number 362019, finally, by a seven, nay zero. Ordinances for first reading.
Mr. President?
Yes?
I'd like the motion to table 1 and 2 for further discussion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
I'd like to separate them because I think one is different than the other, but I don't know, how do we approach that?
The second was by Kathy?
Yes.
This is to keep them together, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, what motion are we working on now? I've got one by Mrs. Arrington, and second by Mrs. Schaff, two.
We should just separate them, shouldn't we? Not just do 1 and 2 to 1, and then do 2?
But she made the request.
For both.
Okay, so she wants to...
Table both 1 and 2 under...
Okay, so we're talking 16097 and 16098 ordinances?
Correct.
To table.
And I'll second it.
Okay. All right, we have a motion by Mrs. Arrington, second by Mrs. Schaff, to table ordinance for first readings, 16097 and 16098. Ms. Allen?
No.
Mrs. Arrington? Mr. Jones? Mr. Kowalski?
No.
Mrs. Schaff? Mr. Witherspoon? Mr. Winarsky? Okay, these are tabled by 5 to 2.
Can I just ask a procedural question? Now that something has been tabled, when can it be brought up again, or how does it have to be brought up again by the people who voted to table?
You can designate a time, or can they bring it off the table in this meeting?
But does it have to be by the people? I just wanted to make sure I'm clear, so are these dead now, or how would they be brought up again?
They're tabled, council has the ability to put it back on, majority of council has tabled it, so we're not gonna discuss it because it's tabled. Council has the ability to put it back on.
But anybody on council could put it back on, or does it? Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on. Council File Number 16099. An ordinance amending official ordinance number 1978 in amendments here thereto, codified under Title VII of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Erie, Pennsylvania, Article 381 Business Regulation and Taxation Code, providing for real estate exemption for all new construction and improvements in all zoning classifications within the limits of the City of Erie. By Mr. Jones, seconded by Mr. Winarsky, the Council File Number 16099, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Ms. Allen?
Is there time for discussion?
Yes, right now.
Okay. I'd like to discuss my vote on this. My colleague Kathy Schaff raised concerns about the timing of this vote a week before our second public hearing, and I agree that we should not be giving first reading approval to this ordinance before the second public hearing. I also object to the language in the ordinance which states that our vote is taking place after two public hearings, one of which has not occurred yet, and that we have heard testimony from officials from the Erie School Board, the Erie County Council, the Erie Redevelopment Authority, and the Erie Planning Commission. In fact, we have not heard formal testimony from anyone from these groups. I thank the members of the public who attended the public hearing last week. You made excellent points, both in favor and against this proposed ordinance. Moreover, you made suggestions that I think City Council should seriously consider. These are the points that jumped out at me. Have the consultants from PFM, the agency charged with preparing Erie's early intervention report, weighed in on the proposed ordinance. I have not had any communication from PFM about LERTA, although PFM did raise concerns about the Erie School District, with the Erie School District about how an earlier version of this ordinance might hurt the school district's chances at financial recovery. One speaker pointed out that Erie Refocus, the city's comprehensive plan, cautioned against giving away valuable bayfront property too cheaply. That speaker is correct about the comprehensive plan. The report, which was adopted by a previous city council, states on page 42, "Bayfront property has outstanding potential to generate revenue for the city, but not if valuable land is sacrificed for parking lots and garages, and not if tax incentives are so generous as to leave the city with little or no actual revenue benefit. Rather than allowing past precedents to shape the terms of future projects on bayfront property, the city must treat the land as the prized commodity that it is and demand commensurate revenues." I'm also interested in the idea of incentivizing development that helps to create jobs, affordable housing, or improve the environment. I liked Reverend Snyder's point that these tax-free developments would be taking advantage of Erie's services, including police and fire protection streets and snow plowing services for 10 years. I would add that they will also benefit from taking advantage of Erie's many cultural assets, which are provided by nonprofits that don't pay taxes. Reverend Snyder suggested that we find a way to set up a fund in which the businesses would have a say about how the community benefit is exercised or used in consultation with the affected community. I like that idea a lot. I'd also like some additional information from the administration about the metrics of how LERTA has worked since the very first ordinances were adopted. Under the current LERTA, there are additional sweeteners if a certain number of jobs are created at a certain wage. I don't have that data on how this information is collected and verified. This is not a criticism, by the way, of Chris Groner, economic development, who's been great. What I want to stress today is that the public hearing changed my mind, or opened my mind to some changes that I think would be beneficial to be worked into this discussion. Public hearing was on Thursday night. I have a couple of part-time jobs. I worked on Friday, I worked on Saturday, I worked all day Sunday, on Monday I had a meeting, and I worked yesterday. I've been staying up at night, really, thinking about LERTA, pulling out all the papers, I, you know, all these dotted papers about how LERTA worked in the past. So, I have not had a chance to present these ideas to Chris Groner and the administration to say, can we work on these ideas? So, I don't want people to perceive that I'm anti-development, I want the city to be revitalized. But there was so much to synthesize from that public hearing, so many questions... so many questions that were raised for me that I didn't even realize I wanted to think about. So that's why I'm voting no. I understand the process. I've been told that if we vote yes on a first reading, we can change it for the second reading. But there is pressure on us to get this adopted because developers are waiting in the wings. And I think that I'm just not comfortable saying that between this meeting today and June nineteenth that we are going to be able to really think through and debate some very useful suggestions that I heard, so...
Mr. President?
I have copies of my statement, if anybody wants it.
First, I want to go on record and say, and I do support LERTA in some great form. I think it has benefits that the average person does not understand. I keep hearing from the school board and other people about its money being put into the pockets taken out of the city. First of all, nothing is being taken out that hasn't been built yet. To give an example, if I was to build the garage that I keep talking about, year in and year out, and month after month, it's true. I am not an affluent landowner. I have a normal house in the city. I did not build a garage onto it. I am considering it. I will not build it unless there's a LERTA. Why? Because LERTA will give me a ten-year window to amortize part of my building costs. You don't have my garage. You will not get my garage. You will not get the added income from that garage until LERTA is passed. Let me make that clear. You still get my same tax that you're going to get out of my house, which you get now. So there is no loss of revenue. You're looking at something that hasn't happened, and no one has a crystal ball to say who would build or who wouldn't build with or without a LERTA. It was proven, under the Flippy administration, that the last year, we generated fourteen million dollars. That's a fact. It's also a fact that because we eliminated LERTA to a large degree in the next administration, more houses were devalued that didn't invest into them. So there was a net, you know, loss there. LERTA is not bad. It needs to be monitored, and this is where I support Ms. Allen. I think that, you know, I kept hearing about, "We're at a deadline." Well, I asked today, "What projects are really at a deadline?" And I got no firm answer. And if there were projects which the administration tells us they're privy to and we're not, that's really wrong. Because I think at least the president of council could be held to... We all take the same oath, and by the way, I will remind the administration that when I was on the school board, whatever we said that was held in confidence, we could go to jail for. We could be held liable because we are public officials who take an oath of confidentiality. And the mayor is no better than the president of council. And when we don't know these deadlines, and all of a sudden, we're asked to vote on them, that's wrong. Because, like I say, I'm for LERTA. But after talking to county council and Erie School District, and even some of my members here at City Council, there's a couple of questions that need to be answered. And unless you can show me a project that's absolutely up at the deadline, can you have that person contact me? Because I'm no different than the mayor or anybody else. I'm going to vote on it, not the mayor. And if you can't tell me what project is shovel-ready that we're going to hold back, I see no problem in studying a couple of the issues. I intend to vote yes on LERTA. Let me make that clear. But only after all the questions and everybody's been satisfied. And I do believe in a citywide LERTA. I believe that it's going to help people like me, who don't have a lot of money, who would like to add on to their house. And, you know, that's important. And if it was, all these projects I keep hearing about, if they're also critical, and, you know, we're up against a window now, why weren't we asked? Why wasn't the process started earlier? The council has been asking for, oh, at least two to three years about some form of LERTA. And every administration approached it different. And I will, you know, I would be glad that the mayor did this and got it off there. But if it's, if we're running that late, we should have started a lot earlier. And I think you do need to involve the legislative bodies. Because at the end of the day, it's not you, it's us that's going to take the beating and the press when twenty years from now, we made a bad decision, and we're finding out we should have done a little more research. So I'm supporting it on the first reading, but I'm telling you this, the second reading, we better have some meetings, or I'm not voting on it.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I am going to vote no, just because I understand about how we have that time. But, and I want to thank Chris Groner for all his help. But I agree with Michael Keys when he mentioned the financial person that we hired. I would like to have that come out and be knowledgeable to that. And on a personal note, my husband scheduled a vacation that week on the second reading, and I'm not going to be able to be part of everything the way I want to be. And Mr. Barnes mentioned cheerleaders. And I'm a cheerleader for this administration. I think all the hard work that they do, and they're really accomplishing a lot. And I am cheerleading for LERTA, but I am not ready to do my routine.
Okay. Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Jones?
No, Mr. Witherspoon.
I'll yield to my colleague.
I better take advantage of that.
Well, it's good.
Thank you, Mr. President, and Mr. Witherspoon as well. Just in relation to LERTA, I am absolutely in support of LERTA. I think it's one of many tools and component parts to generate revenue, to increase the tax base, and all the positive and affirmative things that we know LERTA has the capacity and the potential to do, and evidentiary facts that we have historically, that it does work. I do, with that said, think that we are at a crossroads and a great opportunity to get more than just potential development of brick and mortar and business in our city proper. What I mean by that is, I think absolutely we have the opportunity for that. It's time for that. We need to give the incentives for that. But I think there's some reciprocity that's opportunity... We have an opportunity to get some reciprocity from those businesses beyond just what they're going to offer us in service and goods and building of brick and mortar in our community. I won't get into details of that, because I don't think there's the time for that. I would agree with Ms. Allen that hearing the first and sitting through the first public hearing, and I did listen to every person, but then I also, believe it or not, like you, sitting up and waking up this morning, like, you know, with ideas and thoughts, and it made me think that there are some enhancements that we can make, and we had an opportunity at a crossroad. So here's the thing, though. I think this is part of the process, right? This is a part where the administration had to offer us something to debate. And our solicitor, again, and I don't mean this in a negative way, but respectfully, has reminded us, it's a draft. So if it's a draft, that means there's room for adjustment, for enhancement, for critiquing. And I think that's what we're doing. I think sometimes we can get a little personal, take things a little personal. We get energized and hot-headed, not anyone in particular, just in general, including myself. But this is the time when we make the changes that we want to make. This is the time in the process that we make them. So I'm excited about that. I don't want to take the thunder of my colleague, if she's going to bring it up. But we have now scheduled a, but I will. We scheduled a public study session for the day after our next public hearing. And so the process will go in such that the people that, you know, we should reach out to to ask to be a part of that, that process will happen. Because again, I think there's some room, there's room for enhancement, there's room for change. This is a draft, and I think we have some changes that we could make that would enhance it and have a broader appeal and more beneficial effect. I'll close with this. My suggestion, though, for the study session would be that whoever the individuals who are that have changes, and like myself, bring them to that session so we can vet them, include them or not, and go through that process so we're not making it longer and longer, and, "Oh, I came up with something, but I didn't talk to y'all about it." We have to do, move forward. This shouldn't be an elongated process, because it already has been. But I think that that would be a great setting for the City Council, Erie School Board, County Council members, to be able to bring whatever those nuanced ideas are to the table. We can vet them together and collectively, present them to the administration, and then be able to move forward. I spoke to a member of the administration the other day in passing, and they mentioned, we talked about this particular ordinance, LERTA. And I said, "Well, you know, there's an opportunity. We might be able to do a couple of little things here." And around CBAs, or whatever language you want to use, which has become taboo language, but I think it's really good language if we do it properly. But the response that he gave me was that we cannot legislate morality. And I've said that from this diocese. I've said that. I've come some big soliloquy about it, probably. That's a T-word. Given some big talk about it. But the truth of the matter is, everything we're doing on this agenda, even the items that were tabled, are about legislating morality. And so it just depends on what we want to be moral about. And that's not a derogatory statement. It's a reality of the work that we do, because the work we do is affecting people in how, one way or another. So I'm supporting it by voting today, and that's a sign of support, even with all my critical statement. But at the same time, I think we do have an opportunity to make some enhancements that we can have a broader appeal. This is my last closing, I promise. One of the comments at the public hearing was that, thank you, Mr. President, I appreciate you, is that the last versions of LERTA that were citywide only affected the outskirts and what might be seen as some of the more affluent areas in the city, and didn't hit the core of the inner city, whether it be east side inner or, you know, north or south side, inner city neighborhoods. I think we have an opportunity to change that. We can be intentional if we can generate some revenue from potential businesses and funnel that directly into homeownership or community investment, directly into those neighborhoods where there was no significant LERTA benefit on the map. So there's, again, a lot of things that I think we can do. So I'm going to vote yes today with the excitement and anticipation of some great conversation and debate over the next couple of weeks. Thank you, Mr. President.
Am I allowed to ask one more question? Curtis, Mr. Jones? You were president of council when the ordinance was changed in two thousand and twelve, I believe. So I think, I'm not asking you, but I think it would be really helpful to have context about why those changes were made. I mean, we have all these maps with all these dots, and it looks really impressive to look and see. Two thousand and seven, there's lots of dots on here. But I don't actually know what the legend stands for. I mean, I can understand non-target, target, ten-year, hundred percent max eligible, but I think we need to know what this legend means here, and kind of the legend of LERTA, the legend of what happened in two thousand and seven, and then the actuality of why it was changed in two thousand and twelve. I realized when I looked at this and when you were talking that I don't have that context to know why LERTA was changed. There's a lot of data that could be generated that would be really helpful moving forward. So I really like the way you said, "Let's present our ideas." I mean, I have emailed council twice with my thoughts about the public hearing and my thoughts about my vote today. I will refine those. I'll share those with the administration. But thank you for stating it that way. I think that that's really useful.
And I just, for the sake of the two thousand and seven and five references, because I was on council in those days. It was two totally different worlds. And we can talk about that offline in more detail. But I think that also what's important to understand, and I will say as a compliment to this administration, is that they have included us. Previous administration was inclusive. This administration has taken that to another level of inclusive, with once-a-month meetings and those types of things where they're giving us content, things they're working on. But again, this is two thousand and nineteen, so the world is a little different. And I think the previous two thousand and twelve change, we made it too complicated. It got really weird and complicated in two thousand and twelve. A couple of us were on here, and we're in controller's office as well. So we can have some context conversation about that. But I think that we have a fresh start right now, because it was a total different animal in two thousand and twelve.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in council?
Mr. President? I just want to go on the record and say that I am for LERTA. But I'm going to vote yes for the first reading, but for the second reading, we really do need some changes in there, changes that's going to help our community. We're giving these businesses a ten-year tax incentive to come in and start up a new business. So that's ten years they get to go without paying taxes. And I think with some of that money that they're not paying taxes with, they need to give back to our community. Some way, somehow, our community needs to benefit for it. Because they have to look at it like this. Who are going to patron their businesses? We are. We're going to be helping them make millions of dollars. So I think that they should give something back to our community. And I'm with Mr. Jones. This is an opportunity, you know, for us to make changes to the LERTA, because we're all for the LERTA, but we wanted to help our community, help our citizens. So with that said, I'm going to vote yes for the first reading. And, you know, I'm the one that asked for the study session the day after our next public hearing. That's because we heard some very great ideals the first meeting. Now we come into a second meeting. We're going to have new people there with new ideals. And I think after hearing those other ideals, we put all these together, and we pick and choose what changes we want to make to our LERTA. So I just want everybody to know that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
As we all know, my colleague, Councilman Jones, sits next to me in the caucus room. And I had my folder open with my notes that I was going to present today on LERTA, but I didn't realize he had a photographic memory. So he gave my report, sir. So I thank you very much.
Rose, call for the vote, please.
Okay. Ms. Allen?
No.
Mrs. Arrington? Mr. Jones? Mr. Kowalski? Ms. Schaff?
No.
Mr. Witherspoon? Mr. Winarsky? City Council read and adopt council file ordinance number sixteen zero ninety-nine by a seven, nay two, on first reading. Council file number sixteen thousand one hundred, an ordinance in accordance with the twenty nineteen City of Erie Debt Service and Loan Funds, the sum of thirteen million six hundred and thirty-seven, seven twenty-five, seventy-five, is appropriated from unappropriated and anticipated revenue for use by the City of Erie. By Mr. Kowalski, second by Mr. Jones, the council file ordinance number sixteen one hundred, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Ms. Allen, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kowalski, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarsky. City Council read and adopt council file ordinance number sixteen one hundred by a seven, nay two, on first reading. Council file number sixteen one oh one, an ordinance appropriating the sum of ninety-one thousand three hundred and three fifty-seven from unappropriated and anticipated revenue, provide for the expenditure thereof for the storm water program and fee feasibility study. By Mr. Witherspoon, second by Ms. Schaff, the council file ordinance number sixteen one oh one, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Ms. Allen, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kowalski, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarsky. City Council read and adopt council file ordinance number sixteen one oh one by a seven, nay two, on first reading. Council file sixteen one oh two, an ordinance appropriating the sum of two hundred and sixty-one thousand nine hundred and six dollars from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the Emergency Solutions Grant, ESG nineteen, projects. By Mr. Jones, second by Mr. Winarsky, the council file number sixteen one oh two, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Ms. Allen, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kowalski, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarsky. City Council read and adopt council file ordinance number sixteen one oh two by a seven, nay two, on first reading. Council file number sixteen one oh three, an ordinance appropriating the sum of seven eighty-eight forty-nine from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and twenty thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars program income. dollars program income for a total of eight oh-nine, four-sixty-six for the home M-19 projects. By Mr. Jones, second by Mr. Winarsky, the Council File Ordinance Number 16,103, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Ms. Allen? Mrs. Arrington? Mr. Jones? Mr. Kowalski? Mrs. Schaff? Mr. Witherspoon? Mr. Winarsky? City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance Number 16,103 by A's 7, A's 0. Council File Number 16,104, an ordinance appropriating the sum of three million, seventy-four, three fifty-two from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and five thousand program income for a total of three million, seventy-nine, three fifty-two for the fall for the Community Development Block Grant, CD 19 projects. By Mr. Jones, second by Mr. Witherspoon, the Council File Ordinance Number 16,104, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Ms. Allen? Mrs. Arrington? Mr. Jones? Mr. Kowalski? Ms. Schaff? Mr. Witherspoon? Mr. Winarsky? City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance Number 16,104 by A's 7, A's 0 on Council File Number 16,105, an ordinance appropriating the sum of twenty-one dollars and ninety-nine cents of program, program income generated through the Community Development Block Grant for the CD BG, CD 14 projects. By Mr. Jones, second by Mr. Witherspoon, the Council File Ordinance Number 16,105, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Ms. Allen? Mrs. Arrington? Mr. Jones? Mr. Kowalski? Ms. Schaff? Mr. Witherspoon? Mr. Winarsky? City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance Number 16,105 by A's 7, A's 0 on first reading. I'm going to be saying that in my sleep tonight. Council File Number 16,106, an ordinance appropriating the sum of ten thousand, one forty-one oh-one, one forty-three oh-one of program income generated through the CD BG grant for the CD 15 projects. By Mr. Jones, second by Mr. Witherspoon, the Council File Ordinance Number 16,106, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Ms. Allen? Mrs. Arrington? Mr. Jones? Mr. Kowalski? Ms. Schaff? Mr. Witherspoon? Mr. Winarsky? City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance Number 16,106 by A's 7, A's 0 on Council File 16,107, an ordinance appropriating the sum of six thousand, seven fifty-nine, ninety-six of program income generated through the CD B grant for the CD BG, CD 16 projects. By Mr. Jones, second by Mr. Witherspoon, the Council File Ordinance Number 16,107, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Ms. Allen? Mrs. Arrington? Mr. Jones? Mr. Kowalski? Ms. Schaff? Mr. Witherspoon? Mr. Winarsky? City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance Number 16,107 by A's 7, A's 0 on And Council File 16,108, an ordinance appropriating the sum of seven thousand, nine ninety-three oh-eight of program income generated through the CD BG, CD BG, CD 17 projects. By Mr. Jones, second by Mr. Witherspoon, the Council File Ordinance Number 16,108, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Ms. Allen? Mrs. Arrington? Mr. Jones? Mr. Kowalski? Ms. Schaff? Mr. Witherspoon? Mr. Winarsky? City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance Number 16,108 by A's 7, A's 0 on Okay, we have one old business and then new business coming up. Okay, the old business by Mr. Witherspoon, second by Mr. Winarsky, resolved by the Council of the City of Erie, pursuant to the public hearing held before City Council on Wednesday, May 15, 2019, and the provisions of Act 141, which requires the consent of the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board. The request from Attorney Richard Vendetti, 3820 Liberty Street, Erie, requesting City Council approval for the intermittent transfer of PLCD liquor license previously located in Mill Creek Township, address unknown, and recently purchased at auction to be transferred to the Kang Fuel and Food Mart Inc. at 605 Parade Street, Erie, is hereby approved. Ms. Allen? Mrs. Arrington? Mr. Jones? Mr. Kowalski? Ms. Schaff? Mr. Witherspoon? Mr. Winarsky? That takes us to new business.
Mr. President? Can we move the balance of the agenda?
I will second that. Do we have any separations?
Oh, good. No separations. Move the balance of the agenda. Ms. Allen? Mrs. Arrington? Mr. Jones? Mr. Kowalski? Mrs. Schaff? Mr. Witherspoon? Mr. Winarsky?
Might have been the quickest tallying vote that you've ever done.
And that'll take us to committee reports, Mr. President.
Mr. Jones? Thank, thank you, Mr. President. I think I was pretty well, I'll use Mr. Kowalski's term, eloquent, but I spoke expressly about how I felt in relation to LERTA. And I think it's a great opportunity to be larger than just providing a ten-year, hundred percent citywide tax base or tax incentive and tax abatement program. I think it could be much larger than that with this administration and this council and with what seems like a large number, or at least several, developers who are willing and wanting to, to build and grow the Erie tax base and grow in our city. So I think, you know, I was pretty clear on that. I kind of had a moment, I don't have a particularly, like, I don't have a report in relation to authorities, but I do just want to make a quick statement, and I'll be done here in a second. Again, freedom of speech is a wonderful, wonderful gift that we've been given as citizens in this country. It gets, has started great change and also caused a lot of drama and angst, and it's just part of it though, right? What I do and what I, I do not like, as a black man, and I'm not overly politically correct when it comes to African-American, I've never been to Africa. I'd like to. But as a black man in the United States, I was a little offended by the comment that the gentleman made in identifying the three black members of council, African-American, whatever you're more comfortable with, in relation to trying to tie the Bay, the conversion ban therapy ordinance to Jim Crow law, because black people, it took a lot of woo-sah and peace. I was meditating outside this morning, right outside here, sitting on the cement, just relaxing. And I think if I had not done that, Attorney Betts, I might have articulated a little less articulately. To be very, and I'm being lighthearted so I don't get serious, but this is serious. And I think that was inappropriate, and I think it was out of line, because truthfully, and I don't want to be offensive to anyone, but Jim Crow and segregation was not black people's behavior. White people's behavior with low thinking. And not everyone, but, no, black folks weren't saying, I don't want to drink with them. That wasn't what was going on. So I think it was a skewing of the issue inappropriately, using the gift of freedom of speech to try to make certain people think that if you vote for this, you're voting against your own interests. And that's just not fair. It's just not true. And I think we saw through that today, at least I know I did, I'm sure. Those much more seasoned than me saw through it as well. So, again, I'm excited about the public hearing for LERTA, the opportunity for the study session, the opportunity for a great change and enhancement. Again, the, also the pieces that were tabled, I'm excited about figuring what that looks like out too, because I think there's some intention around that. And I think it's appropriate intention, we just have to figure out how the right language should be crafted and where it doesn't seem to be identifying a certain group of people or a certain demographic inappropriately. I don't think that's the intention, but I just, sometimes language isn't clear until we clear it up. So that's my report. Mr. President, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Kowalski?
I'll keep it brief. I want to first say to the administration, I don't want you to think I'm picking on you on my comments today. I admire your, your better attempt at cooperating with council, but I just like to remind everybody that lost in all this when we study government is the fact that councils and legislative bodies are the lawmakers and the administration are the facilitators. And sometimes that gets lost when we have discussions about making rules and regulations and laws, because it is the councils and the legislative bodies that vote on them in the end. The ideas can come from anybody, but the administration is hired and appropriately so to administer those policies. So don't take that as a negative comment, just I want to see it go further and further, because in the years ahead, we need to have a lot more dialogue. Getting back to the R cap loan that was mentioned here, sometimes people make comments they don't understand, and they like to pick on personalities, I know I hear it all the time, Mr. Scott's a rich man, so why does he need five million dollars? Well, Mr. Scott's going to pay taxes on his hotels, which is a lot more than we get from the other two that we're presently fighting with now to determine what portion they may or may not pay. So it's important to remember that if Nick was such a wise man, he sat in that land for 20 years, maybe, you know, we keep, we hear people go, well, look what they did in Ellentown, look what they did in North Carolina, look what they're doing in Texas. There's a reason, because they are given incentives. And finally, Erie is waking up, and we did them in the past. We had many names for them, Keystone Grants, but they all come with restrictions from the person that gives it. So if you're going to take money from the Commonwealth, your argument should be directed towards the Commonwealth, towards the governor and the legislators to come up with other programs. In the meantime, it would be remiss if the administration and council did not take advantage of five million dollars that was sitting there, which is going to be given away, I know you don't want to hear this, it's going to go somewhere, and nobody's taking it back in Harrisburg. So if we can give it out to somebody who's going to create some epithet in Erie, so be it. We've done it before. Smith's Provision, Erie Insurance, they're still here and hiring more people and they're producing products. Sometimes, you know, you got to take advantage, and I agree, let's have more programs. But that debate is with your legislators, and you should call them, and you know who they are. It's not council that generates that. We are only the people, and that process, by the way, is vetted. They just don't hand out five million dollars. There's a process you go through to make sure that you're able to pay it back or in the terms they want you to, which is with jobs or whatever, so that's not a straight handout. And finally, the alcohol and tobacco ordinance, I'm actually for both of them. I wanted to separate them because I think alcohol should be expanded, actually. I think in most of the cities I've been in, you don't see alcohol, like, I can tell you when I was in the service, you could not walk down certain streets like Virginia Beach and drink alcohol, wasn't tolerated. There were other towns, military towns, there's only like three cities, including us, that allowed that. And even in New Orleans, I was just in New Orleans, you didn't see people walking along Decatur Street with alcohol, maybe in a French corridor, but not in Decatur Street. So I think we need to look at alcohol and see from a larger standpoint. Now, tobacco, hey, no way I'm voting no against tobacco, because I wear this because of my wife. She's an example of what happens when she can sit in a stadium and smell smoke in left field and she's sitting at home plate. That's how, you know, sensitive she is. She has a lung problem, there's other people like her. There was a time when you were on a bus and they put the non-smokers in the back of the bus. There was a time when you could smoke on airplanes, you can't do that no more. You can't smoke in public schools, you can't smoke in public buildings, you can smoke in private clubs if they vote on it, but you now have the freedom to go to a restaurant without being inundated with smoke. I feel sorry for the people living in apartments, but that park is not for anybody specific, it's a city park. And we can very well, as I think the administration mentioned to us, that they are working with Gannon and working with Erie Insurance to redesign where these smoking areas are going to be. And it's a debate to be done with Methodist Towers and these other towers, who's ever, you know, we're talking about a Richmond Arms, it's up to them to provide facilities, and nothing stops them from smoking in front, really. That's a decision by the landlords. But a city park with little kids and other people should be smoke-free. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. President. I just want to take the time to, to thank our current administration. You guys do a fabulous job. You know, I know sometimes when we're in the back room, you know, it don't sound like that, but you do do a great job, and I can see change coming to the Erie community under Mayor Schimber's leadership. You know, we have had so many issues for so long that went unattended, and now a lot of issues they're being attended to, but it's a process. We all must learn how to agree to disagree. But I think one thing that we all in agreeance is that we definitely need change in Erie, Pennsylvania, and I see it coming. So thank you for all that y'all did.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank Ed Bettsa for all your hard work in the gay conversion therapy ban and Renee and the LGBTQ board, but also Jason Brendel, because he's the one who came up and spoke many times for the realization of a more inclusive community. So thank you to all the people involved. I also am not against LERTA, it's just that, like all the things that Liz had mentioned, et cetera, I'm just not quite ready to, to do my dance. I really want to address parks, and I'm not against, I understand all the issues related to smoking in parks, and I get the young lungs at, young lungs at play, and I understand we have issues in our Perry Square with drinking. I really, I understand that, and I just want to talk more, so much more, and I would suggest perhaps we could have a study session on that if, because of how, I don't want one park singled out over others. My dad was a police officer in the seventies, and he would come home with stories about young kids drinking alcohol in Walzak Park. And Walzak Park is up by my house, and it still goes on today. So why are we singling out Perry Square when outside parks like Walzak Park and others still have problems? And you're not going to see the police officers in the outside area parks. And on Friday during the Rip Fest, I went up to a police officer who was smoking, and he was on duty, I'm not going to name any names, but, and I talked to him about, you realize there's going to be a vote going up. So it has to be talked about, and I just would like to see a study session, because I believe we all need to be treated equally and fairly. So that's my thought on that. And, you know, people have mentioned, well, we could do other things like having volunteer people helping out, and that's great too. I'm all for, you know, the different things going on. I'm all for, you know, the different things going on with the beauty of the park, and I'm very thankful. But I walked with Mr., oh my gosh, thank you, John Savelli, and I spent a lot of time with him on Friday and talked with other people in the park, like Mark Tannenbaum and Jerry. He ran for office, anyways, I can't remember his name. But, and I also, that day, John took me to Schmidt Towers, and I got to see the inside, and we had a wonderful, John Lane gave us a tour of the Schmidt Towers. And we have hundreds of people in Methodist Towers, in Schmidt Towers, in Friendship Towers, in Mid-City Towers, in Richford Arms, and they're all people who deserve to be treated equally. And like Freda mentioned, they don't have the space to drink a beer like you and I would in our backyard. I don't drink, it's allergic, I'm the designated driver all the time. But I also want to address all of our parks, because I went just yesterday or two days ago, and I drove around all of the different parks. And most of the parks have porta-potties. And you would say, well, yes, that's because there's ball fields. I'm going to continue even though we're up, because as a gym teacher, I'm trying to get, I was a gym teacher, I'm trying to get a drinking fountain in the park, and I would love to see at least one porta-potty in the park, because there are people who use that park, who, once this municipal building is closed at 5:00, they don't have a place to get a drink, and they don't have a place to use the bathroom. And people complain that people are urinating and whatnot everywhere. That's because they don't have the ability to go to a place like a porta-potty in a wonderful park. I love Perry Square, I love our community, but there are certain issues that we have to address as a community, and that's why I'm glad that we tabled this. Thank you.
Mr. Witherspoon.
I was thinking about it. Thank you, Ms. President. I am for LERTA. I have probably two areas that I will be submitting prior to the next meeting that I'm concerned about. One is the Bayfront, our waterfront, that's our prime real estate, concerned about LERTA down there. Also, I'm concerned about the, if you build, you start a business and you have 10 years, what happens if that building or that business folds in five? I don't know if we can do it legally or not, but I would like to see some wording that if it folds, for the balance of the five that you left, you pay the assessment value of that property. We can talk about it. Councilman Jones eloquently, as usual, expressed concerns about the statement that was made earlier, and I had your same sentiments, Councilman. There is no correlation there whatsoever. And I want to thank Councilwoman Allen for holding me down. She's stronger than she looked, I couldn't move. But I don't think the gentleman meant it in a real bad, negative way, just trying to make a correlation, but pointing the three of us out is not going to change our votes on anything. We're not voting on what he was talking about, we're voting on the issue at hand. And that's that. On a great note, Mr. President, administration, the Spoons Summer Basketball League, I'm happy and I'm worried. I'm happy that we set a record of 322 young men and women has signed up. The flip side of that, I wasn't prepared for that. So scheduling is going to be a little difficult for us, but we'll make it work. For the past two years, we tried to have young men and young women. The young women did not come out the past two years. So we decided this year to open it up to a co-ed, and we have some tough young ladies playing with the men, young men this time. We did have one situation as they were at the combine, trying out and pressing coaches, a young lady did hit a guy with an elbow, and he jumped up in her face, and she did not back down. And I said, okay, I have me a young female Charles Barkley up in here. But we know it's going to work, because these ladies are tough. And the good thing about it is that they're playing with the guys, they're going to get knocked around a little bit, but when they go back to school, they're going to be two or three steps ahead of the girls that they're going to be playing against. The other good thing, we have individuals coming in from Gerard in Fairview. And I talked with one of the parents, I said, you know, we don't call all the fouls here. I said, your boy's going to get hit. He said, I brought him here for him to get tough. So that says something about our inner-city players. They're tough. We got a lot of them this year. That does not include the biddy basketball camp that starts June 25th to the 29th. That's the five, six, seven, eight, nine-year-olds. Doesn't include them. I was told last night, I usually hold it at 40, they're telling me I got 48. So I gotta order some more t-shirts. I'm like Kathy, I'm going on. Now, just one more thing, and that does not include the Bayview Park registrations. That's still open, and we're working with Gannon and Mr. Dave Moverhill on that. So we're going to keep our youth busy. We have them for, from 5:00 to 9:30. There, they're out of trouble, they're under our control. We have a lot of volunteers, and I need to thank the city for hanging in there with us, and we do have some external sponsors as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Witherspoon.
Okay, I wanted to thank you for this time. I agree with Kaz, I would have voted for both of those ordinances on the smoking and the drinking. I think that Kathy might have hit on something, though, when she said, let's look at all of our parks. One of the things in some communication I was sending to Renee, I had talked about, you know, Kathy especially being tuned into our most vulnerable citizens. And Renee had mentioned children. Coincidentally, I found out, I did some research on drinking water in parks, and I found a lot of great resources about why we want water to be there for children, amazing resources on, so we don't have to divide everybody and say our most vulnerable citizens are the homeless. If we're talking about making sure the kids are in smoke-free parks, there's some really good information about why we should have public water available to them. So I also found out that in New York City, which has a pretty stringent smoking ban, I think in Central Park, you're allowed to smoke on the sidewalks, and you're allowed to smoke in the medians. But I also stumbled upon a New York Parks advocacy group, and I think that that might be the way to do this, but we shouldn't let this linger. We should, we know that people downtown have an interest in how do we make downtown parks better, but we could really quickly do this. We could figure out the smoking aspect of it, we could figure out the drinking water aspect of it, and we could figure out the alcohol aspect of it. Because I did see on Facebook that somebody posted that there have been problems at Gridley Park with alcohol. So I think that all of this discussion, you hit the nail on the head, let's look at this holistically, is how do we improve our parks? I also had contacted Chris Taylor from the Upper Room about the, you know, how to work with people who are homeless, and he suggested putting together some kind of formal committee to figure out these suggestions about smoking, and so we can do this. We can make sure that we satisfy all the different constituencies and make Erie a better place by working together on this. In terms of my committee reports, I attended a meeting about possible tax credits for single-family owner-occupied housing for purchase or repairs. That's a long way off, has not even been introduced in Congress, but that's percolating out there. I also attended the poverty tour with Senator Haywood, and that was an amazing event at the Urban Erie Development Corporation to hear personal stories about how important affordable housing is, and what happens if you don't have affordable housing, and how there's a domino effect if you have to move out of affordable housing in a school district and put your kids in a school where you're worried about the education they're getting or about the violence in the neighborhood. So that actually helped, in addition to the public hearing, helped to inform how I've been thinking about LERTA. I had asked, I heard the same thing about we can't legislate morality. However, the People's Supper is supposed to be coming out with some recommendations on equity at the end of June. Why can't we get those recommendations before we do the final vote on Liberty, I'm sorry, on LERTA? And one of the frustrations of, for me, having been a journalist and saving reports over the years, many, many reports, so I found a report, the 2009 Waterfront Master Plan from the Port Authority, which talked about making an iconic connection to the Bayfront. It talked about building boulevards, making the Bayfront Parkway into a boulevard for traffic calming. It talked about building bridges so that people could get to the Bayfront from the east side and the west side. And none of that has occurred. So that's why, if I am somewhat cynical about this narrative that we're all in this together, that we're all rowing in the same direction, and that Erie is going to be great, I have a reason to be somewhat cynical. I always think of myself as a hopeful person, but this is a report that's 10 years old. Oh, by the way, this report also mentions that the Port Authority, under the previous director, was actually looking at the Erie Coke property to somehow acquire it for future development. When have you heard a peep from the Port Authority about Erie Coke? So, it helps to have context. In addition to the poverty tour, you know, I've been following what the Jefferson Leadership Academy has been doing, Trapped in Poverty, good recommendations here. This is why this has to be part of the discussion about the tax incentives we're doing. Okay, God, now I'm going to be the last one to say, I want a little bit more time. The downtown group that met here, a copy of the PowerPoint, why revitalization efforts failed, the importance of a vision, visions that are top-down are not adopted by all stakeholders. So we just had people in town talking about revitalizing downtown. Too much stuff is still too top-down. We're at that tipping point where we have the opportunity to make sure it's not all top-down. We can do this if we listen, if we compromise, and if we come up with some ideas that will work for all. The end of, it has to be the end of the top-down era. That's why I have, you know, I hope EDDC knows that when they did that thing with kicking out those restaurants, that had a ripple effect on how I view anything that's going to come out of that organization. So, that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. I'll be very brief, really, I will. Definitely, I think what everybody has learned today, everybody on this council is for a revised LERTA. And everybody on this council has different thoughts and ideas on how to revise that LERTA. We did have to start somewhere, and it does help to possibly get this first reading under our belt today, gives us time still to have a second public hearing, have a study session, and see what develops after that, and how soon it develops. But we are all in agreement on council that we do need a LERTA, a revised LERTA, and that's why I voted yes on the first reading. The only other thing I wanted to bring up is our, once again, our summer rec program. There is so, so many other things to do than the Spoons Basketball League. What? Tell me what? And, but if anybody out there still wants to sign up for it, I'm sure he'll find a way to get you in it. But between swimming and golf and tennis...
What's the age limit, Mr. President?
I do ask parents, once again, and I know I preach this every beginning of summer when school's getting out, the parents don't get those kids signed up, the grandparents, somebody, please, help get those kids signed up, give them a purpose to get up in the morning, give them something to do with their summertime off, and to just get them involved, because, I'll tell you what, the city invests a lot of money into this summer jobs, as well as the rec program, so please, get your kids signed up. Thank you. Ms. Controller.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'll be brief. One thing I just wanted to add to what Councilman Kotowski was talking about with the RACB funding that was brought up for the Scotts project, they got one $5 million grant from the state, not two, this is from last year. This is, how many years ago? They don't have anything in the city. This is their first project in the city, everything else is, okay. That is a state grant, if you look online, all the regulations are set forth, and they are required to have things like prevailing wage, compliance with ADA, Pennsylvania steel requirements, competitive bidding requirements, that is all built into the legislation.
Ma'am, ma'am, thank you.
As it comes through the city, we monitor that to make sure that it's spent the way it's supposed to be spent, as designated by the state. In terms of the smoking ordinance, as Councilman Kotowski mentioned, we are in the process of working with Gannon, Erie Insurance, the county, the county health department, and the Erie Parking Authority on designating smoking areas. This was never supposed to be done in a vacuum, that is all part of the planning process that we've been working on for about six months now. And I do want to briefly speak to immigrants and refugees. This is World Refugee Awareness Month, and also Immigrant Heritage Month. We would not be where we are as a city if it weren't for our immigrants and refugees. It's estimated that they are about 20% of the city population. 20% of the city population, that means that our population would be at 80,000 people right now. That would have a drastic impact on the city in terms of federal funding we receive. I think there's a lot of misunderstanding about what happens, about the process. It's an extremely lengthy process for immigrants and refugees to become naturalized citizens. They come here, they immediately begin working, paying taxes, buying properties. We have an overabundance of housing stock that they are helping to revitalize, and we have an overabundance of available job openings here in the city that employers are unable to fill because our immigrant and refugee numbers have been so drastically reduced in the last year and a half, two years. So I just want to say, I want to reiterate what others have said, that our immigrants and refugees are really helping to revitalize our community. and refugees are really helping to revitalize our community.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Rose, I think we're adjourned, huh?
Okay. City Council adjourns at 11:34. Mr. Winarsky, Ms. Allen, Mrs. Aronkin, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kyle Smith, Mr. Shaw, and Mr. Witherspoon.
Council Finance Meeting--